Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, June 17th, to order. Please join me in the pleasure of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business is to receive public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak this evening? Any public comment? Going once, twice? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Our first presentation this evening is to receive an update on our sewer system. And that may sound mundane, but I can assure you it isn't. Because without a well-functioning sewer system, nothing else matters. So with us tonight, we have Craig Flaherty, Chairman of the Sewer Commission, and Ed Gentile, Director of Public Works. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. (laughter) Jump right in. You got your back. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this forward. I don't believe, since I've been here these five years, that I've had an opportunity to give an update to the Board of Selectmen on our sewer system, which, I think upon my first or second week here, I determined it was probably the most important piece of infrastructure Darien has. It's over eighty years old. There's eighty-one miles of sanitary sewer that we have to maintain, along with fourteen pump stations throughout town. We do have currently three full-time employees and the use of outside vendors to maintain them. Over the past five years, we've made some capital and operational improvements, and I'm gonna kinda go down a couple of them here, just to give you a flavor of what we've been doing. We did increase staff from two to three men, maintenance men, September 2015. We did that mostly for coverage over the weekends and to provide a two-man crew and a one-man supervisor. We, currently now, we get more work done with that setup. So that's kinda been a stepping off point to what I decided to implement with regard to maintenance for our sanitary sewer. We started making some major pump station improvements. Our upgrades to the Stony Brook pump station, as well as a Near Water pump station, included the replacement at both locations, all three seventy-five horsepower pumps. We did start that in July of 2015, and we finished that in November 2016. We did it in stages. One pump at each station every four months. Funding was something that I had to obtain, so that's why we spread it out. We also made some changes to both of the mechanical systems that drive these pumps. They're called VFDs, they're Variable Frequency Drives. They allow these pumps to ramp up and ramp down, thus extending the life of these pumps.
Ed, can you interject a public service announcement on what was the driver for replacing those pumps?
I was just getting to that, but I don't know.
Awesome, great.
The older pumps that we had, they were thirty years old. They leaked all the time. We pulled one out. We were always down to two pumps. There was one situation where we were down to one pump for a day or two, and we had it back up and running. But the main driver was the disposable wipes that are not disposable.
Not flushable.
Not flushable. What ended up happening is they would clog these pumps up at least once a day at two different locations, and we had to shut pumps down to pull them out. I'm not gonna describe what it looked like, but it was something that you wouldn't want to have to crawl down underneath these pumps and pull out with your hands. These guys were doing it on a regular basis. These new pumps that we have have new impellers, they shred these things to pieces, but as a public service announcement, I'd appreciate it if we did not flush those. There are ones that are, there are ones that are not. They're right on the label. Please read them before you flush them.
Thank you.
Although, I will say, I think that there's a class action lawsuit, because some of the ones that are advertised as flushable still cause the same problem. Wet wipes will bond together and become these large coagulated balls, and other than just pumps, they can actually obstruct pieces of the gravity sewer as well.
I told you this stuff was good.
Some of the equipment that we upgraded with the variable drives, also, as I mentioned, we did that in July 2016. So you see, we're moving along to upgrade the two major pump stations here in town, and that's what we did. We, at the same time, we upgraded some of our equipment with regards to trucks on the road. We bought a brand-new Vector truck. That helped us maintain all the pipes in town. We can jet them, we can vacuum out the stuff that we actually clear from the pipes, instead of letting it go downstream and causing a problem further down. We also invested in a new crane truck. It helps us now pull all the pumps that we have. We have a crane that can now lift every single one of the pumps that we have out of its location. We fitted that truck up with a generator and some other functioning equipment, too. During emergencies, we don't have to trail their stuff out to the site. So with those items, that kinda got us into, I'd say, the 21st century. We continue to move on with other pump stations. We did a Five Mile River pump station upgrade. We upgraded the pumps, gate valves, backflow valves, and this was an important one, because the backflow valve in this one was stuck open. And what ends up happening is you pump the water up this force main that's almost a mile and a half long, the pump goes off, the water comes back into the wet well. So you're pumping it two, three, four times. Our electric bills were four or five times what they should be. So at that point now, that we have this fixed, you see, we saw a major decrease, almost sixty-five percent in our electric bill, just at that land station. The other one now we're working on is a Seagate pump station. That's in a flood hazard area, which, so I wanted to make sure this one got done. We're doing the same thing, gate valves, pumps, backflow valves, and we're changing out the generator and the controls. So just those, just those five items that I mentioned, those four pump stations and the equipment we bought, we've spent now, in the past five years, 1.2 million dollars in capital investment. So we continue. We have more to do. There'll be more investments made, and I'll outline that in a brief minute. We have now, in low-lying flood areas, addressed the sanitary sewer manholes themselves. Water, when it floods over on a road on top of a manhole, will make its way down through the manhole cover and into the sanitary sewer itself. So what we've done now is bought storm inserts, they go right inside the manholes, little cups. They stop the water from going in, one of the ways to prevent inflow from getting into our sanitary sewer. If you folks don't know, part of our operating costs every year is a payment to the city of Stanford that pays for all of the flow that we send over to them to treat. Whether it's sewage or rainwater, it doesn't make, it doesn't make a difference, it doesn't distinguish between the two, it treats it. So we get charged quite a hefty number. We're up to about 2.3 million dollars a year, just in treatment. We did start an aggressive, not aggressive, a passive-aggressive program, if you will, to bring people's attention to sump pumps and illicit connections. We've sent out, in the bills the last three years, notices for sump pumps in your houses are not permitted by ordinance, they're not permitted by state plumbing code.
To discharge into the sewer.
To discharge into the sewer. The other piece of the notice was our backflow valves. For folks that are below the level of the roadway, we promoted the use of a backflow. Make sure you have it in case our system wasn't functioning properly, your system in your house would not be impacted.
Can you just define for the viewing public what an illicit connection is?
Eddie? So basically, as Ed was describing, probably more than half the water that's in our system is clean water. We'd rather it not be there. So that could be groundwater getting into the pipes. Could be groundwater from someone's sump pump connection in their house dumping into the sanitary sewer. Could also be indirect inflow, which is surface water overflowing into the system, or roof gutters or drains in someone's yard coming into the system. But that, that's about half the water that we're paying to treat. And so, any illicit connection from a private property would be the discharge of clean surface storm water or groundwater into the sanitary sewer by means of a pipe connection or a pump connection.
Thank you.
I have to keep him involved here. He'll sit down again. So I'm always trying to keep him involved. What we're gonna do and talk about next at the upcoming meetings for the Sewer Commission is an adjustment to our sump pump ordinance, if you will. Though it's, it's a sensitive topic, people that have them in the houses, some of them may not even know they're there. Some of them may know they're there, but we wanna bring attention to it, but we also want to get some buy-in to have them removed, and showing them some of the figures and numbers of what it costs to discharge that water into our sanitary sewer system in lieu of discharging it into our storm system. That is probably one of the ways we're gonna try to roll it out, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I wanna get it out there. I want people to know that we're gonna start talking about it, and that we need to do something about it. It's gonna be one of those items that's going to, if we, if we address it properly, reduce our flows that we send over to Stanford.
Do some people receive permits to connect their groundwater or surface water into the sanitary sewer system, or are all connections of that sort considered illicit?
They all, there's two answers to the same question, but they should not be receiving permits for it, and they should all be considered illicit.
Okay, thank you.
Our next, our next program is the one that I'm getting a little excited about, because it's something that's gonna drive the next five years of our capital improvements to our sanitary sewer system. We did put out an RFQ for an INI study, that's an inflow, an infiltration study. Last one was done, or partially done, back in 2005, and the one before that was 1997. So this is something that's been, that is in need here in Darien. And we're currently, after selecting a consultant, we're currently negotiating the scope and contract with them right now. Some of the items that this INI study, or inflow and infiltration study will undertake are, there'll be flow monitoring, we'll be putting in pipe meters, and we'll also be metering with our pump stations. This will give us spikes or peaks when it rains, so we'll be doing some wet well, or wet weather monitoring, if you will. We also do video inspection. We'll be videoing both the gravity, and we're looking into possibly trying to videotape our force mains also. That'll give us the conditions of the insides of the pipes, whether there's roots or blockages, pipe disconnects, any type of grease. And I'll get into fog in about, in about a minute, but that's probably one of our biggest problems in the downtown area, and I wanna get, get that out to the public, too. We need some cooperation in that respect. There'll be some smoke testing done, that'll be announced to the public before we do it. It's putting smoke into the sanitary sewer system and watching where it comes out. Some illicit connections, you'll see the smoke come out of them, whether it be smoke stacks in your houses, gutter systems, catch basins on private property, you'll see the smoke come out, and then we knock on their door, and we have a polite conversation about what's going on. We'll do wet, weather manhole inspections, we'll do, which I'm excited about, and I know Darren's excited about it, I hope he's listening, is our sanitary sewer mapping system. We're gonna put it on GIS.
Great.
It's gonna allow us to do tracking for maintenance. There's functions in it. If you're trying to track down some type of discharge in our system that doesn't belong there, we can actually track it back to its source. That's gonna, that's gonna be a program that we'll probably work on, probably take about a year to get that in place, finalized and up and running, but that's a good, and it's a big piece of our study that's gonna be done. And finally, they're gonna do a pump station inspection, all fourteen of them, and recommendations on some changes, upgrades, whatever they feel necessary, based on their professional This whole study is gonna direct our capital funds for the next five years. We're gonna go after the low-hanging fruit first. We're gonna find out where our inflow is coming in, and we're gonna try to cut it off, because that is, our best rate of return comes from that function, of removing storm water that's in our sanitary sewer system. And just some key points on some operational programs. We are implementing our FOG regulations from the DEEP.
Fog?
Fats, oils, and grease.
I heard about fat bergs on TV recently.
Grease, grease combining with wet wipes is a real danger, and there are examples from very large sewer systems from around the world, how those can turn into blobs on the scale of tons.
Yes, exactly.
So basically, it's any, generally, the FOG program has to do with public kitchens that generate grease, and making sure they're managing their grease waste in accordance with state regulation. One thing that we were able to do last year was coordinate with our Health Department Director, so that before he reissues an annual kitchen permit, they have to show compliance with the FOG program. That's been helpful to get compliance up.
So for commercial establishments, they have grease traps that should be catching those things, but it would be important to also share with our residential customers that you should not put fats, oils, or grease down your home system either, right?
If you do, if you do any amount of frying at home, that shouldn't just be poured down the drain. It's bad for your own system, right? You could be clogging your own system, and you also could be clogging our system.
Thank you.
And there's, you can discharge yellow waste at, can you put that in the open? No? Okay, okay. We talked about it.
What'd you talk about?
That's another barrel. So like I said, we are implementing the FOG regulations from the DEEP and going through an enforcement program, and we did last year, and as Craig mentioned, with the help of the Department Head Director Dave Knopf, I wanna thank him. He did a great job towards the end of the year, doing exactly what we needed him to do, which was hold up the permits for the restaurants that were compliant. And we did get them all in compliance before he signed off on them, and that was a big help. So this year, coming September, October, we're gonna, we're gonna get out there a little bit earlier, see if we can get better compliance with our FOG. We do have routine maintenance, that we do jetting and videoing of our pipe locations that we normally have problems with. We do monitor the downtown area during the wet season, before, during, and after the storms. We're looking for surcharges, any, any changes in the flows. And these guys have been out there now for the past year and a half, watching these things, and I think they have a very good idea of where our problems are. So when we start that INI study, we're gonna sit with them and the consultant to see if we can focus our energies towards the proper pipes in the proper areas. Sorry. We do have a root control program. We spend about $25,000 a year, on the average. We have a three-year rotating program. These, the company comes in and sprays the insides of the pipe with a, with a chemical that eats away at the roots. And we do that on a three-year maintenance program, and it is, it's warranted for three years. So if I miss a year, I guess the roots will come back, as they say, but that is something we've been doing now for the last five years. And what we did do this past, this past April, we finished inspecting the manhole locations of our force main discharges. And I bring that up as a special case, because that is where we had our biggest problem, back in October, when we had a gravity main collapse over by 1950, 1950 Boston Post Road, or basically right out in front of Mama Carmella's. And we were there for three or four nights repairing it. So we went and inspected all of the locations. Hydrogen sulfide will eat through a concrete pipe, it'll eat through asbestos concrete pipe, and we're finding both of those here. We did repair the one that we did find. So it was good that we had the guys go out and do their inspections. So I feel more confident now with our locations where the force main discharges and creates this gas, that our pipes are still in decent shape. Just to mention, last year, we did have a rainfall in excess of twelve inches above our yearly average, which precipitated the, a few of our residents coming into our Sewer Commission meeting and bringing to our attention some issues that we had with our sewer system. And I mentioned that so that, and I told Craig, so that you could understand that we, what we're implementing now with our study, what we're gonna implement with our capital improvements, we're serious about making our system better. We heard what they had to say, we went out and inspected those locations. So we will continue to upgrade our system, so that we don't have any backups, so that we don't have any overflows. And that's the main goal behind this whole study right now. I think I, could I?
Yeah.
Can I just interject? There's something else that you guys do that you didn't speak about. When do you, in what situation do you line the pipes? Is that when, after you do the root control?
Lining a pipe is a, a system that you'd use in lieu of open trench excavation to replace the pipe.
I see.
So we lined that 300 feet of concrete pipe in front of Mama Carmella's manhole, the manhole, so that we wouldn't have to open trench the Boston Post Road. There were very few laterals, which are connections from houses into this main, which, which is a good thing, because that takes, that probably takes the most time to go back and to cut out each one of the laterals. This sleeve goes through the pipe, they open it up inside, they cure it, it's hard as, as regular plastic could be. And then they go back with the machine, and they actually cut open holes at these laterals, so that they will function as they did with the regular concrete pipe in place.
Thank you.
Sure. I guess I'm Craig Flaherty, for the record, Chairman of the Sewer Commission, also a professional engineer. I'm really here to speak highly of Ed Gentile and offer him our full support from the Sewer Commission. I think you can see by the history of the last five years, he came into this job and took a very proactive approach for the care of this infrastructure, recognizing those critical components. We wanna continue that proactive approach with not only the study, but implementing the recommendations of that study, because it's no fun to be in a reactive position when we have a situation like the break we had over the winter on the post road.
Thank you, Craig. Questions from the board? Okay.
Ed, the sewer system is a gravity system primarily, correct? You have some pumping as well. So, as I understand it, variable, variable speed pumps are critical to maintaining a system, it's a closed pipe system, in other words, it takes away that shock of a pump going on. How critical are they here in a gravity-fed system, or, if you will, a less intense pressurized system?
With the VFDs that we do have, and the locations that we have them in, those, they are located in our two biggest pump stations. Basically, Stony Brook handles two-thirds of our sewer shed in town, and Near Water handles close to eighty percent. With that said, it's important to not shock a system. Those variable drives are saving tons of maintenance on those systems, on those piping systems that come out.
Hydrogen pumps.
And the pumps.
And the pumps, yeah.
But remember that the force mains that we have here in town are older now. They're much older than, than I thought they were, but they're still in decent shape. So we're gonna inspect them. We do have some redundancy from Near Water to Stanford. We don't have redundancy at Stony Brook, so I wanna check that pipe out, I wanna see the conditions, and I don't wanna react to something that could happen to that force main. So those VFDs now are taking a lot of stress off of that force main, as well as the pumps.
It's good practice, no matter what.
They are a good investment.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. What are we doing to educate the public besides something like tonight about these issues with the sump pumps, or with the non-flushable and flushable wipes, all these? How is that information coming out to the public, just in a forum like this?
A forum like this is one. Our Sewer Commission meetings, they're televised to the, I don't believe, I don't believe they're hot-watched, but...
I think our best moment for attention is when you get your bill. Most people will open that envelope and look at it, and so each year, we put kind of the critical pieces of communication in that bill.
Okay. And do you have people's emails as well, to do eBLOS, like service announcements, things like that?
No, not so much.
And then, my, my only other question then, when we're gonna start, when you start doing these sort of smoke tests to see where sort of the violations lie, are there actual fines that we are putting on residents?
We don't have fines set, a fine system set up right now for illicit connections. The ordinance says you're not supposed to have it, but there's, there's no defined fine in there, if you will. That's one of the conversations that I'm going to be having with the Sewer Commission, to see how they want to address that issue.
Now, is it someone from your office, then, that's gonna be working with these people, sort of following up, to make sure that they've dismantled whatever?
It would either be somebody from our office, or we may have to hire a consultant to do it, if there's, there are that many.
I also wanna, you know, put this into a little bit of context, right? So based on kind of industry numbers, of that half of the water that we don't want in our system, half is probably getting in the system in the public rights of way, right? Cracks in pipes, you know, you know, old gaps in tile pipes, manholes, or whatever, maybe cross connections to a catch basin or two here and there. And half is potentially coming from private sources. That's vague industry generalisms, not specific to Darien, but if you think about, then, the private side, you have the lateral connection from the main in the street to the home or business is the private side. So similarly, it could be disjointed. Sections could be gaps that are coming in because of that. So half of a half of a half. My point is, we have to be careful with the time, energy, and dollars that we focus, and so we're gonna be focusing those time, energy, and dollars on where we can get the best result. So if we think the pump, that sump pump discharges are a large component, then we'll focus time, energy, and dollars on it. If not, it may fall down the list to some other priorities.
Thank you.
I'm just stewing about smoke tests. Is smoke gonna appear in people's residences and set off their smoke alarms?
They shouldn't. They shouldn't.
All plumbing systems are supposed to be properly vented, vented and trapped. So if they're vented and trapped...
Okay, I understand, they shouldn't.
An open connection would go out, the vent would...
Sure, I got it. And you're gonna stand around and watch?
And if, honestly, if they're properly vented, they, I would prefer that they find out from a smoke test, and from the buildup of non-distracted gases in their homes.
Yes, yes.
Maybe, maybe that's where the public announcement, or getting the word out, these tests are gonna be out there. People all of a sudden are not calling the fire department, except for that, in one given day.
Good point. We should tell the fire department, too.
That would be important for the public announcement.
The companies that do this testing have protocols set up. They've done it, so we'll follow the, of course, we'll, you know, we're not the first one to do it, but I will definitely follow. And if we believe there's some extra work that should be done to announce it, we'll do that, too.
Yeah. Public has a way of, they might be, hopefully, listening to this, so that would be great, but if not, then I think the more educated we can get them will be a benefit, so we don't have masks packed.
As, as we hopefully have better educated on just the regular waste management side, away doesn't mean away. There's a process to get rid of everything that we're either trying to throw away or flush down the toilet, and it has a cost impact to all of us.
Thank you. We really appreciate the presentation. I, we learned a lot, and hopefully the public learned a lot from it also.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have a presentation regarding a proposed partnership for Weed Beach Improvements, and we have Pam Geary and members of her commission here this evening, and other special guests who are going to be part of that partnership. So Pam, do you wanna come forward? Lori? Yep, sure.
Good evening. I'm Marie Bore, Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm here with Pam Geary and several members of the commission to unveil exciting proposed partnership between the Town of Darien, the Darien Foundation, and the Darien Athletic Foundation for improvements to Weed Beach Park. To give some background and context, in early 2014, the town purchased a parcel of land previously known as Four Short Lane for $1,925,000. The parcel was surrounded by Weed Beach Park and provided a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to fill the hole in the donut, so that the entire south end of Weed Beach Park could be developed for community use. Since its acquisition, this area of Weed Beach has been the subject of an isolated study and plan, the results of which were subsequently put on hold to allow for the results of the more comprehensive Parks Master Plan. The Parks Master Plan was completed in January of 2018. Two concepts for Weed Beach were developed. Both concepts include, but were not limited to, regrading the property to provide direct access to an expanded beach, and the addition of walking trails, which would encompass not only the short lane parcel and surrounds, but connect to walking trails throughout Weed Beach Park. The Parks and Recreation Commission included a capital request in the 2020 budget to fund the improvements to the short lane area. Drawings were prepared by Weston and Sampson and presented at a public hearing in our February meeting. However, all the $50,000... However, all but 50,000 of the funding was removed from the budget. Pam Geary, the Director of Darien's Parks and Recreation Department, subsequently reached out to various organizations in town to determine if there was interest in private support for the project. And indeed, there was. I'll let Pam and representatives of the Darien Foundation and the Darien Athletic Foundation share the exciting details. But before I turn the podium over, I'd like to emphasize that the plan you will hear about tonight is consistent with and supports the Weed Beach concept and the Park Master Plan as a whole. In the programming trends section of the Master Plan, two of the key trends noted were healthy lifestyle and active living and festivals and events. Within the healthy lifestyle and active living trend, it is noted that bicycling and walking make a big impact on improving the health and life expectancy of our residents. Studies are cited in the plan that state a connected system of trails increases the level of physical activity in a community. Trails can provide a wide variety of opportunities for being physically active such as walking, running and hiking, rollerblading, wheelchair recreation, bicycling, cross-country skiing and snow shoeing. With regard to festivals and events, the term "festivalization," I had to practice that, is introduced and it's in the plan, which is the drive for communities to develop platforms for the creation and consumption of cultural experiences. There are a growing number of smaller local community-based festivals and events in communities of our size. Our own Weed Beach Fest is a really great example. The proposed plan perfectly supports both of these trends and I'm going to turn it over to Pam to give more detail. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just going to put this big shot up from our Parks Master Plan that shows the entire parcel that Lori referred to. And just a quick just perspective about when we learned that the short lane project was cut from the budget. And I think there was just that feeling of understanding fiscal responsibility and project priorities that you all have to deal with, but it was disheartening by the fact that we didn't want to see this project sit on a shelf and gather dust because we realized how many projects in town can be really important. And I think that was the drive behind going out and seeing whether there'd be support somewhere else. And in reality, and I wanted to just, I condensed this, this is the presentation that I had given to the Darien Athletic Foundation and the Darien Foundation in a much longer version, but I wanted to show the secrets behind perhaps what they saw. We'll grab their attention with it. And it's very short, but it shows you the short lane parcel that is, as Lori mentioned, the donut inside the park property. And then the next shot shows you the red and the blue. And the red is really the project site that encompasses all around the short line project that we designed, that Weston and Sampson designed. This is what the capital project that was being requested included was in the red zone. And the blue zone was the entire parcel together. So, when I went to talk to both organizations and to give the project overview, which is in bullet form on the other page, I showed the current design which had been cut and talked about that really being a phase one to the phase two of the vision, which is on the following shot, which is here in front of you. And I think the vision that included, I put the wheelchair in here of accessibility for all because the importance behind utilizing this 25-acre park that really today only gets utilized on the waterfront. Waterfront and the paddle courts right behind it. We really don't utilize the entire parcel. There's, you know, our park crew has spent a lot of time clearing out the bath where the marshy areas are that connects to the bath picnic area, but it rarely gets used. And I think the excitement behind this, not certainly that the Darien Athletic Foundation and the Darien Foundation, I know Ward's here to talk on behalf of both, but to tell a little bit about their excitement behind the project and their passion and why they embraced it and to walk away and to receive a phone call a mere eight days later that shared their excitement to give back to the community as a whole and that this project also shared in their mission, with their mission statement as well. So, I am pleased to announce that that, together, we really want to see this project completed. With that, it seems, and I could say too, that the partnership isn't, although very creative, not necessarily brand new, we have the Darien Nature Center, we have the Boat Club, we have the Diller Project that the Darien Athletic Foundation is going to be donating back to the town. The Darien Foundation gave to the playground at Sound that we just celebrated the 10-year anniversary of. So, some of these partnerships are there, they've been in town and thank goodness for them and how wonderful that we don't have to put this on a shelf to collect dust. So, we're looking to the Board of Selectmen and the RTM to support this partnership, to help us provide a building committee to help us guide through it with that so that the foundations can help fund this project in its entirety with our help and support to donate back to the town.
Very exciting.
Very exciting.
Thank you.
And Ward, would you like to say a few things?
Sure.
Ward sits on both the Darien Athletic Foundation and the Darien Foundation.
Very convenient.
Holy smokes. Anyway, it's an honor to be here, just number one, I went to school here. It's pretty amazing. But I want to make sure to introduce a few people. Sarah Woodbury is our executive director. Lori Orms is a longtime board member. Jen Montanaro is with the Darien Athletic Foundation and she and that whole group are amazing in what they've done. And just to give a little background on me, I joined the Darien Foundation in the early 2000s and was fortunate to become the chairman of the Darien Foundation, which I've been for a while, when Jennifer Mark and Mark Maybell and Pete Graham were putting together the Darien Athletic Foundation. They were nice enough to include me to be on the board of that and so I've had the opportunity to see both organizations and what they both stand for. And I think that from the Darien Foundation's standpoint, you know, we've been around for 20-plus years, we've done, you know, a lot of public-private partnerships, a lot of which were early on, especially with the school systems. And so, it's nice to come back in a big way to work on this, you know, together with Pam and the town. The Darien Athletic Foundation, I think, has done an incredible job obviously with the fields and the running path and everything else. And I give again Jen and Mark and Pete and Lou Jiswalde and the rest of the group much more of the credit. I'm way behind the scenes there, those guys run the show and I'm just happy to be part of that. But the neat thing was, we came together as a unit for DAF Media and that really brought us close and DAF Media again was the Darien Athletic Foundation's creation and we've come in and tried to be very helpful where we can be and that's been a super partnership. And so, when Mark and Pam and all of us got together, the chance for the Darien Foundation again to partner with the Darien Athletic Foundation to do something amazing for the community, when I look at the community and think about Weed Beach and how important it is to the town, and I'm a huge exercise buff, but you can't tell that by looking at me, I think that, actually it's funny because Susan Daly is here and Susan was the one who, or one of four, who came to us about 10 years ago for the playground by the sound. Anyway, it's worked out, you know, very well and anyway, we're thrilled to be part of that. But anyway, the moral of the story is, I think for us to enhance the community, to give everybody a chance to access the water which everybody wants, to access, you know, a nice park where you can sit and bring your kids and let them run around, to have a safe path where you can run, I'm not sure what the rules are with biking and skateboarding, but anyway, just to have a nice path for the kids to express themselves in a safe environment. And when I think of what the Darien Foundation and the Darien Athletic Foundation stand for, it's, you know, quality of life, you know, safety and security, youth, you know, what we can do. I mean, that's, those are our three pillars. I know the Athletic Foundation believes in that as well. And this project, I think, brings it all together where families can go down there and their youth can have fun, there's a nice quality of life. And I think people are going to feel safer and more secure in a nice, well-built operation. But before I sit down, I just want to say a few things about Pam where I think a lot of this is really driven by Pam and her excitement over it. And actually, I first saw it when I was at an Athletic Foundation board meeting and just how excited she was and how everybody rallied around her at that meeting. And then she came and presented to the Darien Foundation and after the meeting, I mean, everybody was, you know, all in in both cases. And so, we're strongly behind this. We think it's a good thing for the town, we think it's great for the citizens of the town, the community and just another step in the right direction for, you know, Darien to be a better Darien.
It's very exciting, very generous proposal on the part of the Athletic Foundation and the Darien Foundation. I'm really excited about it. Can you tell us a little bit more about how you see the partnership working, what it means in terms of project and if you've, you know, put any rough numbers behind this and the partnership?
Yeah, I want you to speak that. If you want to speak to Jen, this with some of your history with what you guys have done with the fields, I mean, while you start then, we can...
Well, I went, when I went to talk to them, to both organizations, I was talking to them strictly about the short lane Weed Beach area, which, if you will, would have been phase one. And, you know, with that, I came with the same numbers that we came to the town for, $625,000. And I think, and tell me if I'm wrong, afterwards, when they met and talked about the project, it was like, we don't want to stop at that. We want, we don't want to do phases, we want to do the project. Let's do it, let's do the whole thing. And so, that number isn't on the table right now because we still have to have the design made. So, we have a design for the one parcel and we have the $50,000 that was given to us from the capital project to continue the design, to incorporate the design. So, everything in here is Park Master Plan concept. So, now we need to finish the design and this will take, we've done this design here and now we're going to take it through the park. We're hoping to get that mile, so whether we have to have a few creative loops here to go around, there would be a bridge over the wetlands here through the other picnic area and with a boardwalk, waterfront boardwalk that goes across the sound that reconnects on this side. So, really that's the plan and Weston and Sampson is ready to design. And from there, we would like the building committee to be put together so that we can all work together to get the design the way we want it to and everybody's happy with. And from that point, it would work very similar to the way the Diller property has worked in that they will gift it back to the town with the project complete.
Terrific. So, the idea is that you'll take the 50,000 that we put into the budget for capital improvements and use it for additional design. Do we need to do anything from an approval process?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
And between us and, Jen wants to say, we both, you're Mark, both organizations, 300,000 plus as a starting point and both of us have that money on hand, it doesn't have to be raised with the thought that if it becomes a bigger project that we can go back in and do that, we're very supportive and always have been. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. Susan would tell you that when they came with the playground, it was an amazing thing. I know they wanted sport courts and we said we're all in for that too, but we were too late for that. And so, if we're going to do something, we'd rather do it right and have it be first class than, you know, not do it all.
And we did talk about town side, that we would, however we could use town resources to its best, we would do it as much as we could on our side, whether it was moving some earth, there was clearing brush, or it was whatever we could do with some of our town resources that would be really helpful to cover expenses.
And Jen and her team, well, I say her team, but Jen, I just want to keep giving her credit because she's amazing and Pete and Mark have been doing this throughout the whole Darien Athletic Foundation process. And so, they've got a whole model and methodology, people they work with and it's first class, it's first rate and well done. So, we're totally behind that too as our organizations, you know, believing in this model and we're going to support that as well.
Great. Jen, would you like to make any comments tonight?
Well, just want to thank you for the opportunity, Jen Montanaro, thank you for the opportunity to be here. And I can't say enough great things about this woman here because never before has there been such a cheerleader for our town. And I think really early on, when Pam came to the Darien Athletic Foundation and sort of put the little bug in our ear, immediately, you know, Pete, Mark and I sort of, hmm, said, wow, Darien Foundation, if ever there's going to be a collaborative effort for something for our town, for all of our community members to use, the right group should be the Darien Foundation, Darien Athletic Foundation and the town. And right from that first meeting when we sat down, everybody brought something else to the table and great ideas and it just felt so natural and collaborative. So, we at the Darien Athletic Foundation are in full, you know, support of Pam and of course of the Darien Foundation. And just what an amazing group of townspeople and volunteers and we are so lucky to be able to have them here in Darien and to hopefully make this happen. And I do have to say, I might have pushed, try not to phase this out after having gone through the Diller property. So, I think that might have been my push, but obviously we do what's best for the town government and we'll do what they say we should be doing.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, it's a really wonderfully unique partnership, three-way partnership. I'm not aware that there's been any other partnership of this kind, you know, in tandem with town government. So, it's very exciting and from what we're hearing tonight, I want to thank you so much for your willingness to be so generous to the Darien residents. Really exciting to work through the details, but I'd love to open it up for questions from my board. I'm not even really quite sure where, I'm really pretty emotional about watching the whole thing. Thank you all for, Pam for starting this whole thing and Jen and for Ward, your organizations are really going to make such a difference. So, what a great, what a great project. One of the things that comes to mind, and Susan might be able to answer this, when Weed Beach was redeveloped, did you guys do everything in that original design? I know it was a long time ago and I know things have changed, but I was wondering, since that was already done, were there things there that may or may not be able to be incorporated?
For the Weed Beach design, we did encounter some budget constraints also, so we did kind of take things out. There was originally a boardwalk that was going to go around the whole space, so we had it in our plan. I think Weston and Sampson has looked at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
The Stanley Building was another one. We didn't end up touching that because we found out later on that if we did do any renovations that we'd have to bring it up to ADA compliance and at that point, we didn't have the financial. And the building was intact at that point, so we didn't need, there wasn't a need besides some paint at that point. So, those are the kind of the two major things I could think of off the top of my head.
That's what I thought.
The parking lot, Susan?
Oh, yeah, the parking lot, we didn't do the parking lot, you know, the gravel parking lot either. I mean, we didn't also want to have too much asphalt, so we talked about doing interlocked pavors that would allow order to see if you, so that it wasn't always, all you saw was a black parking lot. So, that was intentional, I don't think, we thought it was just going to be gravel the way it is now, but...
Sure. And things have probably changed even in 10 years quite a bit, so obviously redoing the design will be great. It's such a positive project, so if there is any public out there listening, especially any neighbors to this property, this is concepts, right? We're not even at the concept. We haven't even gotten back to the whole design. So, I just want people to understand that there's lots of steps that have to be gone through and people shouldn't, whether they look at this and shouldn't assume that this is exactly what it will look like. I think the more that we can encourage people to listen and not conclude things beforehand, well, I think we're learning a lot through all these projects.
Correct. I will talk to that, to the design for the short lane area have already gone through approvals because at that time, that's what we were working toward. So, EPC has approved it. So, EPC has approved it with the mitigation, the improvement, and enlarging of the wetlands on that side of the property. I went to the sewer commission, and they approved the use of the property, having gone, and I went to three different meetings on that level because they went and they actually walked the property, being unaware that they were, that their property even spilled over into that area, which today is just filled with broken branches, brush, wetlands. So, they see it as a huge improvement to that site. So, there are all those, and those have, went with three different public hearings for the neighbors. And just before we had the EPC approval, we had a public hearing with the Parker Recreation Commission, which, with quite a few neighbors, actually. And not much, not pushed back at all, I should tell you.
None.
So, there will be another process to tying those two areas together. But indeed, we also wanted to design with the boat, the DGST boat building, if you will, or town boat building, boat center that in mind for future too. So, that, that design does hold that beachfront to give us space for something like that in the future. We have the money for it.
Just to be clear, the short lane property design, you're hoping stands as it's without the.
There's no need to redesign it. We just want to connect it all then.
Okay. So, a building committee that we'd be putting together or appointing would be for the new concepts for the other parts of the beach?
True, but yet incorporating the whole thing.
Yeah.
It, it connects it. I mean, we did this one part design. Now, if there's any tweaks that need to be made, because now we're all three different units, absolutely, it's on the table. But we did put work into that $25,000 design. And at this point now, we just really want to connect it. We want to be able to.
Do you see waiting to do until we have the full concept done and vetted before we start any of the project?
Yes. Yes. Because I had, I had to withdraw my P&amp;Z application for that, so that we can get the whole design done, and then go back to P&amp;Z for the whole site. So, we're really ahead of the game. And hopefully, we, I would hope that if we could get on P&amp;Z for September, there is a possibility of having that design now. In a perfect world, I mean, I really do try to go down a timeline and say a sensible time. But I think the feeling is, what a terrific goal would be to have this project done for the 2020 Bicentennial, which is to be celebrated at the Weed Beach Fest next June. Is it possible?
Wow.
Could be.
Other questions from the board? So, it's interesting that we're seeing this just on the heels of the community-wide debate and decision by the RTM on Highland Farm. Because this is a series of walking trails, and we don't have any buildings coming out of the ground. But the dollar spend comes close to the threshold where the Board of Selectmen should consider at least whether we want to have a building committee or whether we don't. Is that correct, Kate?
Yes.
So, we don't, you know, our policy is that if, if we have a project that is a million dollars or more, we can discuss whether we would like to see a building committee. So, we will, we're receiving from you tonight, the suggestion to do that. And we can put that on, you know, our next agenda to have that conversation.
Okay. We need to keep in mind that we don't know what the full scope is at this point, too. It very well could be, and I think when the foundations came back to me, they said, we know, we understand how expensive program, projects can be. Therefore, we're looking at this as a million-dollar project. So, and however it moves forward, we know that we've discussed that there'll be a couple representatives from the DAF, a couple from the DF, a couple from the commission. You know, obviously, we need to have people that are available to be able to meet, whether it's every other week, or I would think it would be biweekly. But we haven't even discussed that yet.
Okay.
We just wanted to unveil it. We wanted the public to know about it. And, and I certainly, I've had discussions with, say, the Pollinator Pathway Group and the Garden Club, and they're excited. Because I think the feeling is, we want to make it an experience. It's not simply to go walking, or to run, or to ride your bike, but perhaps through that, the natural part of the land, there can be, you know, this incredible, you know, lavender gardens that you, that you go through and smell and come out as an experience through this park. So, there's a lot we can do. And the garden comes so willing to put some funds into it, as well as tree conservancy, that we're going to have a conversation with as well.
Wonderful. It's very, very exciting.
And one last little thing I'll say.
Yes, sure. I'm sorry, would you mind coming over here, Ward, to get on the microphone?
I just wanted to say one little thing. In addition to Pam and Sarah put together an amazing little operation for this 10th anniversary, or the 10th birthday of the playground. And I don't know if I want this on video, but Pam, Sarah, the Darien Athletic Foundation, the Darien Foundation are also working on kind of a catchy way to encompass this, so that people feel real good about a catchy name for this new project. And Sarah's really been leading that in a lot of the backbone of everything we're doing on our end. So, I just wanted to give you an idea that it's not just we're up here saying stuff, like, we're already, like, thinking, let's get this done, and we're behind the 2020 goal. We can make that happen.
Okay. Any other board questions? Now, again, an incredibly generous gift proposal that we look forward to working with you on. And we will take it up again at our next meeting.
Great.
Thank you so much. Okay, next order of business is first selectmen's report. Couple of things, just to wrap up from the state budget and the legislative session. Generally speaking, in terms of municipal funding, things are pretty leveled. $15,000 more to ECS, but $18,000, almost $19,000 less for local capital improvement money, which you might recall goes to help fund our paving program. Town aid road is level funded from what it was last year, and so is our state property payment in lieu of tax payment. So, all in all, we will be receiving just shy of $4,000 less in this coming year than we did last year. Some legislative highlights, which I'm sure you're already well aware of, it's been reported in the media, but the legislature approved a $43 billion budget, which represents a 4.4% increase over the next biennium. $100 million was added to the budget for increased funding for ECS. There's no increase in the income tax. There's an expansion of the sales tax base, not the rate, but other things will be now taxed, digital downloads, dry cleaning, parking, and prepared foods, among other things. There will be an additional $50 million increase in the pass-through entity tax. We will continue to fund the circuit breaker and renters rebate program here locally. That used to be paid for by the state, but we, that's in our budget now. Steep grants will be reinstated in 2021, so I'm hoping that we can come up with a, a great proposal to put in for steep grant. Fracking waste is banned in the state of Connecticut, and the state law supersedes any local ordinance that was passed, so I'm glad we made.
Great.
The legislature approved a variety of different studies, the consolidation of public service answering points, dispatch centers will be studied further, certain ideas around regionalism, tax assessment, tax collection, and a number of other things. And they're going to study, and I don't really know what this means yet, but they're going to be studying municipal fiscal capacity. And I don't know if, Kate, if you have any insight into that from?
No.
Okay. Minimum wage will increase to $15 by the year 2023. Paid family medical leave must be offered by all businesses that have at least one employee or more. It will be funded with a half a percent payroll deduction. The teachers' retirement system, although cities and towns are not yet forced to pay into the teacher retirement system, I understand we, CCM received a presentation from State Treasurer Sean Wooden last week, and he believes that that idea will come back in the next legislative session.
Jamie, sorry, can I ask you one question?
Yes.
About the family leave, municipal, whether it's board of ed side or the town side employees, do they have, are they exempt from the contribution, I'll call it a contribution, I'm not quite sure the wording of it, for the family leave, or what's the status?
So, I need, I need certain clarification. Public sector union members are exempt until they bargain for that benefit. What I don't know, and I need clarification on, is non-represented municipal or state employees, if they are, if municipalities and state government must provide that benefit for non-represented employees. And I haven't seen the answer to that yet. What is happening with the teacher retirement system is there's going to be a re-amortization of the plan. It's going to extend the payments out to 2049 from 2032, which will add an additional $16 billion of interest into that system. But the good news is that they reduced the discount rate from 8% to 6.9%. And there will be, I'm told, a series of special sessions, and one of them will be specifically to address the idea of tolls. So, that's kind of the general legislative session highlights. I want to acknowledge to everybody who's listening that I'm receiving a lot of complaints about the condition of our roads. A number of reasons. We have had extensive infrastructure work in many of our roads for gas main expansion and for replacing water mains by Aquarion. So, we're kind of in that, in that time period right now where the projects are almost completed. We have to wait until the trenching settles. We have to allow people to make their service connections. There, there was an 18-month window between the time the gas main went in, when the, we would go back and repave the roads. So, under our regular repaving program, we're going to repave just shy of four miles this year. But next year, we're going to pave a little bit over five miles, because many of these roads that have been dug up for water and gas will all be repaired. So, we really appreciate your patience. Sorry, it's frustrating to, to travel across the bumpy roads, but it's the price of progress, in my opinion. And so, we thank you for your patience. And last but not least, on behalf of the board, I'm sure, we want to congratulate the 2019 graduating class of Darien High School and wish them great success in their future endeavors. Graduation's tomorrow, so we wish you all very well.
Me too.
Kate?
Just a couple of things. I may say this to you, but Tossel is very important. We now have all payroll in arrears, except for the elected officials, and we're going to take care of that. But that was a big get for us with all the union contracts for the efficiency of the finance department. So, that's all, that's in place now. It is our year-end, so a lot of what's going on now is closing out purchase orders, cleaning up invoices, getting everything ready there. We have been more aggressive with collecting unpaid parking tickets. Our, since we've moved the payment of parking tickets over here to the reception, receptionist, she has been very proactive in getting out delinquent notices more frequently than had been happening in the past with the system. And we're booting more if, you know, if we find people in the lot that have a number of unpaid parking tickets, we're going after them. So, hopefully, people will start playing by their rules better. And then the last thing, I just wanted to mention that the farmer's market has, has started for the year. It's on Wednesdays at Good Lives.
The hours are slightly different. It's now 10.
The hours are slight, yeah.
10 to 2.
3, I think.
10 to 2, 10 to 3. Yep. To follow on Kate's comment about parking tickets, we seem to have a continued challenge in the heart of our downtown corridor, in the block that has the Sugar Bowl in it. And so, Ed is going to be going out to paint the, the corners, if you will. We probably all forget when we took our driver's test that you can't park within 25 feet of, of an intersection. So, we put up some new signs as a reminder, but he's going to go out and paint some curbs as a visual reminder, so.
Yellow lines, I assume, right?
Yeah, yellow, yellow curbing, yes. And they did, today, Public Works did repaint, finally, the crosswalk across Corbin Drive. So, I know that was an exciting fix. Businesses in the area were eager for that to happen.
It's amazing what excites us.
I know. Did you see the Darien toy box picture, though?
All the time.
He used his little Lego toys out there. It's very creative. Okay. New business, discuss and take action to authorize the acceptance of donations for the 2020 celebration.
So, the 2020 committee is raising money for the 2020 celebration. And according to the charter, the Board of Selectmen has to accept gifts under $10,000. Over $10,000, they have to go to the RTM. Jen and I talked about it. You know, we've seen this kind of thing before. We signed up with the raising money for the football field when it was turfed, and the baseball field when that was turfed. And we were looking to streamline the process, not have to come to you every week with a lot of donations. We will have to go to the RTM at some point, the board of finance and the RTM, to have the funds appropriated so that they can be spent. But we thought, if you allow Jen and I jointly to accept donations at this point, under $10,000, as they come in, provide you with a report on a regular basis of what we have received, that that might be a smoother, more efficient process. So, that is our suggestion to you. You have a suggested motion. It's entirely up to you.
So, moved?
I'll second. Okay, so moved by Kip, second by Pam. I really like that idea. Thank you for taking that on. I just want to ensure that when donations are received, that an appropriate notice and tax letter gets sent back to the.
Right. We do have the tax letter.
Perfect. Okay. And can it have an appropriate thank you that goes along with it? Something maybe, I don't know what. Could I take a look at what your standard letter is? Because I think when somebody makes a contribution to an event like that, we want to be sure that we.
We'll have to come, yeah, we'll have to come up with, because we haven't been the ones to do the thank you letters in the past, so.
Correct. And maybe that can be a task of the 2020 committee, as long as, as long as they know, you guys send out the notification, but we want to make sure that they're thanked appropriately.
And do we have any idea at this point, are they expecting a large, a large, large amount of donations that are under $10,000 or over, or at this point, they don't know? They, they don't know. And we did ask them if, did they have a target amount that they were trying to raise? Because part of our, you know, discussion on, you know, obviously, we can't go to the RTM until September anyway. But we will have to at some point go to the RTM with a number allowing, you know, the smoother thing would be to get the RTM to appropriate donations up to X amount, so that we don't have to go back multiple times to increase it. You know, if we just appropriated what we had at a certain point, and we get more, you don't want to have to keep going back to them.
I don't think they have a hard and fast budget yet.
Yeah.
But they want to be out there raising money.
And they do know, we want to know that.
Okay. Any other discussion on that item? So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, discuss and take action to approve the fiscal year 1920 pay plan for non-represented employees and elected officials. We discuss this in executive session. I'll read the motion. Whereas the town of Darien evaluates the work performance of its non-bargaining unit administrators to develop the annual pay plan for these employees. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Darien pay plan for elected officials, administrative group positions, and part-time employees be adopted in accordance with the attached sheet entitled Administrative Group Pay Plan for Fiscal Year 2019-20. Be it further resolved that the first selectman is authorized to adjust wages of individual employees effective July 1, 2019- employees effective July 1st, 2019, consistent with such pay plan and performance evaluations as recommended by the town administrator and discussed with members of the Board of Selectmen. May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Mark?
We'll move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Kip? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you. And thank you for your word on that, Kate. Okay. All right. Moving on to transfers, we have two transfer requests this evening.
All right. So the first one is a, um, really an administrative, um, change. When we put together the fiscal 1819 budget, and I don't know why the date on this is 2010, that's, I just saw that. Uh, when we put together the 1819 budget, um, the chef's position was a full-time, 35-hour a week position. When we filled the vacancy, we changed it to a 27-hour part-time position, which means accounting-wise, we put it into a different line. So this is really shifting the budget from where it was originally to where, um, actually, where the funds were paid out of.
Okay. Any further questions about this administrative change? I'll entertain a motion to approve a transfer of $37,734 from full-time salary to, uh, the same amount to a part-time salary line. Susan moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Kip? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay.
Okay. And the second one, registrars, um...
Oh, we have a lot of people on the ballot every year. And, um, the ballots were just expensive. I, you know, this really should have come along earlier in the year, closer to when the expense actually happened, but, um, it just was more expensive to do the two-page ballot, two-sided, two-page. And, um, there's not, you know, it's going to be a difficult thing to manage. I don't know, um, I think it's going to happen again, you know, depending on what type of election it is, but with 100 people in the RTM, running in, you know, some people running every year, we're always going to have a lot of people on the ballot.
But this is a clean-up from last year.
This is from the fall election. What I'm saying, you know, we really should have, they, they should have requested this, you know, several months ago?
Yeah. That's okay. This was 10.
Okay, so it's a, a motion to transfer $13,805 from contingency to program expenses. May I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Pam, seconded by Mark. All those in favor? That reminds me, Kate, is it possible for us to get an update on where we are with our contingencies since we're closing in on the end of the year?
Yeah, Austin.
Okay, thank you.
Um, how about I have her do that at the town head meeting next month?
Perfect, yeah. Okay.
And just, I would, you know, let you know, you'll probably be seeing a few more transfers next month, um, as we do all the cleanup.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have a series of reappointments and appointments this evening. With your permission, I will read them all. We are reappointing, if you desire, Dave Dever and Jim Cameron to the Area 9 Cable Council for terms expiring on June 30th, 2021. Reappointing Jennifer Geddes to the Commission on Aging for a term expiring on March 31st, 2022. Reappointing Terri Gaffney to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term expiring in November, November 30th, 2021. And appointing George Riley to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring on June 30th, 2022. And we have a small administrative change. We appointed Susan Cameron to the Sewer Commission, but her term expiration was incorrect. She, her term actually expires on December 31st, 2021. So I'll entertain a motion to approve those reappointments and appointment.
Um, may I suggest we, we take separate votes on these things? These are just tonight, just for this group, you know? It's, uh...
Okay.
Our channel, Channel 79 people and Jennifer Geddes and some of these people are really, are really key to a lot of, uh, our operations of our town. And they've been, they've been with us quite a while, and, uh, they continue to contribute.
I would agree. Can I just ask if the vote outcome will be, I mean, I can allow for the vote outcome to be different? Or you're welcome to make a statement about the incredible volunteers that we have?
I just made the statement, so we can have one vote.
Okay. If anybody else would like to make a comment about the folks that we're appointing or reappointing this evening?
No, other than I think that we've had a really good mix of people that have served the town for a long time, over the past couple of months that we've interviewed, as well as some new blood. So I think we've had a great balance of, of both, which is key, I think, to all these boards and commissions. You need the experience and you need the new people to carry on once the.
Agreed.
Mature people, so.
I would agree. Okay. So with your permission, I'll entertain a motion to approve, um, all of these reappointments and appointments.
So moved.
Mark? May I have a second? Susan? All those in favor? Great, thank you. Uh, and just to share with everybody who's watching this evening, we're always looking for more volunteers. So please, if you have an interest in getting involved in town government, um, contact our office and we'll help facilitate, um, letting the right people know of your interest. Okay, we have meeting minutes from our regular meeting of June 3rd this evening. Any corrections or additions?
Sorry, I just realized. Oops. My name is wrong.
That's funny.
I didn't see that.
I didn't see that, and I reviewed these.
I didn't say it. I, I wasn't saying anything.
Okay. Are there any other corrections or additions to the regular meeting minutes of June 3rd?
No.
Hearing none, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Yep. May I have a second?
Second.
Mark? All those in favor? Thank you. And we have special meeting minutes of June 3rd.
So moved.
Susan moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Kip? All those in favor? Great, thank you. Uh, agenda review. Um, I'd like to bring back a discussion on a community value statement. And we want to bring back the Weed Beach.
Yep.
Proposal.
What exactly would you want on the Weed Beach, bringing it back?
Uh, well, we have to have a discussion about a building committee.
We don't know what the number is yet, though. We don't know what the financial number is yet.
Correct, but we can work on a charge, likely.
Well, I mean, I thought if it, if it was under a million dollars, you don't need a building committee.
That's what we need to discuss.
But isn't that what she said, that they're, they're making it as a million-dollar project?
They're, right now, yeah. They don't know it until, until it's designed and, and costed out.
Your, your. But it sounds like they also want to expedite this, so anything we could do ahead of time.
Yeah. Your policy is actually to evaluate anything over a million dollars, but, um, you could always have the discussion contingent on being over a million. I do think Pam's right, you know, if, if they're looking to move the project along, the faster you, you know, if you can be ready to seat a building committee quickly, um, I think it'd be helpful.
We'll bring it back and we'll have the discussion on whether we desire to seat a building committee or some iteration thereof, whether it's, uh, you know, a, a working group, for example, to execute the, the, you know, gift and plan. But I think that we should bring it back, discuss it, and vote on it.
Okay.
Anything else for agenda review?
When you, um, discuss the community values statement, would you also be interested in reviewing your goals and objectives?
Yes, I'd actually really, uh, very much appreciate, um, input from this board on goals and objectives.
Do we have an example of a community value statement from perhaps some other town? I'm just having a little trouble with the concept.
We'll get some.
I don't really want somebody else to do the work, you know, but, uh...
No, that's a, it's a good suggestion, yeah. Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Pam, second. Susan? All those in favor? Thank you.